It is 9:30 and we will call the October meeting of the Wood County Board of Supervisors to order. I have a few supervisors appearing remotely today. I have Supervisor Bry and Supervisor Fisher by video, and I have Supervisor Hamilton on the phone. And we've asked them to leave their microphones muted unless they want to speak, so we avoid some of that feedback. I appreciate that. We have several people here when we get to that point. It looks like the only place for the public comment portion of the meeting, and I will talk about that when we get there. The clerk has taken the role. Looks like everybody here has signed in. And at this time, I would call Unsupervisor Rosario. Please come forward for the invocation. And as Donna works her way forward, I'd ask you to please rise and let me stand in full Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
If you care to join, please join me in prayer. Our Father in Heaven, holy be your name. You are acknowledged as the Creator and Sustainer of all things, as the Lord and Savior of all who choose to believe, and as a present help in times of trouble. Thank you for your wisdom and direction during these challenging times. There are so many needs in our world, we don't even know how to pray, but you know those needs better than we do, and we bring those to you this morning. For those who are sick, for families who have lost loved ones, for our military personnel and government officials at all levels and around the world, for healthcare workers and those in law enforcement, as well as all emergency management personnel, we especially pray. For healing, comfort, safety, wisdom, grace, and mercy. Thank you for this day in which to serve you. The opportunity is appreciated and we are forever grateful. Thank you for having the whole world in your hands, even though our understanding of the work of those male scarred hands is limited. Bless us as we gather today to work on behalf of the people of Wood County. May our efforts not be in vain. In the precious name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Do you join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Rosario. First item is to take care of the minutes from the previous meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion by fire. I was seconded by LaFontaine. So we got those up on the board now. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Good with that, Trent? We don't need to go to the board.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. We have no excusals today. We have no resignations. Is there any objection to me taking the appointments or reappointments as a group? Any objection to that? All right, our appointments today, the South Central Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term, Francis Jurney; the Veteran's Service Commission for a three-year term, Tom Heiser; the Civil Service Commission, five-year term, David Lowdy; and to the Ethics Committee for three-year terms, Robert Littrock and Jeff Conrad. And again, I would entertain a motion to that effect. We have it on the board. We have a motion by Supervisor Wagner, a second by Supervisor LaFontaine. Can I do this by voice again? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And I will remember from this time forward to allow for that delay with our people appearing remotely or virtually. Thanks. At this point in time, we come to public comments, and our public comments are limited to three minutes per person. I would ask, I see we have a group here, I think probably the same thing. They may have one or two, maybe all of them want to speak, spokesmen. You know, the one thing I ask is that you don't reiterate the same thing over and over. You have different points that greatly appreciate it. But the first person I'd like to call forward under public comment is Jim Walsh. Jim is the person who brought this meeting to public access originally, and Jim just received a very prestigious award, and part of that was because of the work he did here with our county board. Jim, what are yours?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, you mentioned, and I believe I looked it up today, 1992, I stood right over there and the county board meeting. I know back as far as remembered, and I don't know if anybody's been here long enough to remember, they did a county board meeting at Harshfield, at the university, and I taped it there. And I, you know, that was before they quit doing it that way, where they did one here, one there. My award was for the Wisconsin Community Media. I was nominated in April. They were going to do it in Milwaukee, but we all know what happened. And it is the Wisconsin Community Media Award, Jim Walsh, for all your statewide leadership, courageous advocacy, and on-horning dedication to the mission of public education and government access television. It's empowering people to create media for human purposes. And I was inducted into their Hall of Fame October the 1st, 2020. And I have the plaque here, but with the rules, I was going to show it to everybody, but we won't do that because I won't be good about it. It was kind of a neat thing. They also informed me the other day now that with this, I have been nominated to be placed into the Hall of Fame for the tri-state media, which includes Iowa, Illinois, and Wisconsin. So I will wait to hear from that. But Mr. Pollack and I were just discussing all the things back then that were unbelievable. I don't know if anybody was around, but we attempted to do a live hearing with Judge Zappan right up here way back in the days. It caused a little controversy, but we didn't do it anyway. Water ski shows, all kinds of things, and I really enjoyed it. I hope that everybody knows that the main reason I did everything is because I'm a people person. I enjoyed interviewing several you people. Ms. Rosario and all them, I did interviews back in the day when she was a nurse with about 10. So, and I don't forget those. I have a memory, they kid me. I'm better than an elephant. I could go back to two years old and remember everything, and it was a blast. And I guess I wouldn't trade it for any reason in the world. And this really meant a lot to me. When they notified me, I will be the first to admit, I went to tears because this did mean a lot. I was just telling Mr. Pollack too, the 18th, 10 years since I retired because of the stroke. And it's been hard. When you're a people person and all of a sudden you're not, it's hard. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this time. I really appreciate it.
Jim, this is Supervisor Rosario for your Republican Service Group, the community access. As an elected official, as a member of the community and the various organizations you're a member of, you're certainly a high-profile member of this community, and we thank you for your involvement.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, that brings us to public comment. And as you can see, we have a three-minute timer. I would ask that anybody who comes forward to the microphone to speak, that they please identify themselves first. You can see the timer up on the board. And with that being said, I think we'll move this along. So I assume, because I've been told and I recognize some of the people in the room, that most of these speakers here today are here to speak in regard to the Second Amendment. Action has been taken by some of the counties. This is an informational item. This is not an action item today. It is not anywhere in the form of a resolution. So I would ask that those individuals come forward, identify yourself, and have at it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to move things. So these people are coming up here without a mask, and I think that's wrong.
Yeah, you know, Mr. Clendenning makes a point. One of the things in our courthouse, we try to make sure that our staff is safe and that we can operate all the departments we need to operate in the county. So if you have a mask, we certainly appreciate you wearing it. Mr. Clendenning, I appreciate you bringing that up. Please go ahead.
Morning. My name is Mike Dury. I've resided in Wood County for the past 47 years. I'm having moved here from Portland, Oregon, on the 19th. What I have before you today is over 600 signatures from constituents all over the As a resolution to further protect our Second Amendment rights, and in light of today's turbulent times and current government overreach, I find it prudent, as well as these folks here, to further secure our Second Amendment rights. Thank you for your time in moving this resolution along as quickly as possible. End of the day.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Joe Humphrey. I reside in Richfield Township here in Wisconsin. I'm busy.
I don't believe that microphone is on. Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, if you can speak into it, that'd be great. They were picking it up up here. Thank you. Sorry. We'll credit you those 15 seconds, man.
We won't take that long. Again, my name is Joe Humphrey. I reside in Richfield Township here in Wisconsin. I've been here since I retired in 2011. I come to the board today to advocate for the Second Amendment sanctuary status for Wood County. I believe we need to encourage the townships, the municipalities, the cities, the towns under our control not to pass laws that are repugnant to our Constitution. And I would remind you of the, where is it? Yeah, Marbury and Madison decision in 1803. No law that is repugnant to the Constitution can be passed, and it is null and void. I think it's a clear message that we need to send and make sure that our Second Amendment rights are upheld. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tom Heiser, and I live in the town of Grand Rapids. Mr. Chairman, members of the Wood County Board of Supervisors, I stand here in support of an ordinance to make Wood County a sanctuary county. The following should be familiar to all of you, as this is the oath of office we took on April 21st, 2020. For a term of two years to commence on the 21st day of April, 2020, in and for the county of Wood, Wisconsin, whose solemnly slaver will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, will be common and included with the Wood County Supervisors, best my ability, so help me God. The Second Amendment, the well-regulated militia being necessary for the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. The Constitution of Wisconsin protects the right to bear arms in Article 1, Section 25. The people have the right to keep and bear arms for security, defense, hunting, recreation, and other lawful purposes. The Second Amendment Sanctuary County is simply a county in which the citizens have petitioned the local government for pass a resolution or an ordinance that opposes the God-given rights guaranteed by their Second Amendment. Some people consider the term sanctuary county to be associated with a sanctuary city. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time breathing.
Yeah, hard time breathing. Yeah, take it off, Tom.
The term sanctuary county reference here is being used to refer to sanctuaries with practice and one's right to keep and bear arms is respected and encouraged. Sanctuary cities are intended to not comply with immigration laws. Information is shared by sanctuary counties. On June 22nd, 2007, the Brown County Bill of Rights became a first county to have passed one of these resolutions to support the Second Amendment. Since then, more than 1,165 counties across the country have passed Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolutions. Thirty-seven percent of all counties in the United States have this ordinance. Hunting is an important contributor, not only to Wisconsin and Wood County's economy, but a cultural, culturally significant pastime for a number of individuals from around the world. The latest information I have from 2011 is hunting totaled $2.5 billion in the state of Wisconsin. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you. I sincerely hope that you will approve and pass the 2019 Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance for Wood County, State of Wisconsin. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerd. Do we have additional public comment?
My name is Lynn Dury. I have been raised in Wisconsin Rapids, been here all my life. I don't have statistics or whatever. I'm going to speak from the heart. When I was a young girl and would hear my grandparents, my parents, because it wasn't too far off from World War II, my aunts and uncles talked about the horrificness of what took place, reading articles, looking at magazine pictures of the horrors of what had taken place. I often wondered, how, how could a whole nation of people be herded onto train cars meant for cattle, and how they were housed in horrific conditions? And upon growing in age and researching, it is because citizens were disarmed. That's how it happened. With the call to defund police, with the socialist bent going on in this country today, we're not too far off. We really are not. So the only thing that they can do when they defund the police and shackle them to not be able to do their job, which is enforce the law, we will follow the other countries and have military law. We'll have military enforcement, law enforcement. And what that means is the Constitution has already been thrown away. We have no more rights. This sanctuary request is just one more step that they would have to go through to usurp our rights. For right now, we still are a nation blessed with the freedoms to live as we wish, vote as we choose, worship where we want to, and express our opinion without fear of retribution. That is, except for the overreach that's going on with mandates, which has no constitutional bearing. So I thank you for considering this sanctuary for our Second Amendment rights. They are inalienable. They are for our protection of our homes, of our persons, and protection against a tyrannical government. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a matter of course, you know, we'd like you to keep the applause down too. We appreciate the comments very much, but typically we don't want to get into that on your side of issues. Thanks. Go ahead, please.
My name is Patrick O'Connor. I've lived in Wood County since 1978. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I spent a year and a half of my young life there. And I like to ask the people on the board, how many of you have slept with a rifle? How many of you have been glad that you had that rifle? I did. I was in Vietnam during TAP-68, and I slept with my rifle. Very glad I had it. I would like to be able to continue to do that for the rest of my life because I've never really felt comfortable living since Vietnam. I've always had a weapon close to me, except today I don't have one with me because I'm in a courthouse. Because it's law that you don't carry one in here. So I want you to consider that, that everybody should have the right to defend themselves. And I don't like the idea that the Second Amendment is being attacked as it is today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. O'Connor. Further public comment? Do we have further public comment? All right, seeing that, and I don't know if anybody understands necessarily the process, and I think it may have been explained by Supervisor Rosario earlier. This is not something that is before us right now, and I saw that, I believe he said he had 600 signatures basically, and typically this gets routed through a committee. This is a judicial and legislative issue, in my opinion. And I'm going to ask, I know, Mr. Clendenning, you're not at your microphone right at the moment. I appreciate that, but would you like this routed through your committee, Supervisor Clendenning?
Yes. I know we want to actually put things on the agenda, but if anybody on my committee is approached by one of these people, we will take it up at the next meeting and see if they can be put on the agenda.
Okay. And as a matter of, I guess, principle, we have, is there an announcement that we have 600 signatures there, or would we like a copy, would you like a copy of those for your, for the clerk? Maybe that's the best place to house those. What would be the best process, Mr. Clerk?
Whatever is the wishes of the board. The petitions themselves don't cause any action as far as an election or anything like that.
Right. Just to have those on file, we'll get.
However you choose to act that.
Mr. Wagner?
Mr. Chairman, I believe it would be appropriate to have a motion to accept petition and place it on file.
And that's an appropriate motion. I have a motion to accept petitions and place on file by Supervisor Wagner. I have a second by Supervisor Rosario. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'm vulnerable in objection to that because this sets a precedent, and anybody circulate a petition, regardless of how many signatures they have on it, I'm going back to when we changed the side of the county board, and it was a citizen's action that had a resolution come before the county board on this. And what it did was it had to have a certain number of signatures. If this is not a, an amendment whatsoever to our bylaws or things like that, I think this here should be a petition that stays with those people because what good is it going to do us to have them on file? We don't know how they were circulated, when they were circulated, or even if they were properly circulated. So I will be voting no.
Okay. I'm just going to ask for clarification. These are not obviously, they have not been circulated as part of a referendum, I don't believe. They are just strictly signature signing, therefore nothing more than informational. And I think Supervisor Clendenning, what you referred to was in regard to the drafting and enactment of referendum coming from this board. Further discussion, Supervisor Wagner?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. My understanding of a motion to accept and place on file is acknowledging that citizens have petitioned the board, but it is not, it is not a matter of authorizing action or acceptance of the provisions of the petition.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Supervisor Lightman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So placed on file with the county clerk, not the judicial legislative committee. Correct.
Right. And would they have access? I guess my point is that there's access to the board they have, and everybody gets sent a pile of 600 pieces of paper. Is there any further discussion? Further discussion? Would you like this board, board on the board to write, or stress my voice? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll note that, Mr. Clendenning was opposed. We will note that those will be placed on file with the clerk's office. Thank you very much. And the clerk is going to do that.
He's going to get him.
I'm going to get him.
You want it, I'm going to put it in my hands.
All right. Thank you. I thank you, everybody, for their public comment today.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Rosario.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a question in light of Supervisor Clendenning's comments. Mr. Clendenning said that only if a member of his committee approached him, would he put this on the agenda, so I'm assuming that he's objecting to putting it on the agenda. Is there any way that we can be a little more forthright and say, put it on your agenda? Or is it truly up to a member of his committee, and he is chair, that it goes on the committee? I'd like to make sure it gets as an agenda item on his committee for further discussion. So I'd like to clarify what the intent is here.
Okay. Well, there's, obviously, there's a couple of routes to get something to the county board floor. One is through committee action, the other is the fact that any supervisor individually can bring a resolution to the floor. Peter, do you want to comment directly to answer this question, or go? Supervisor Clendenning?
If this, if Supervisor Rosario wants to make a motion to send this to the Judicial Legislative Committee and gets a second and it passes, it goes to the Judicial Legislative Committee, and that's how it can be done. Otherwise, any member can ask me to put it on there, but I would prefer a member of the committee because that's what it is.
Okay. So let me back up. Supervisor Rosario, would you like to put that in the form of a motion to ask that that be placed on the Judicial Legislative Committee agenda?
I'm sorry. I would prefer that somebody on the committee put it on, but if it's going to necessitate a motion from this, from me, I will do that. So I guess to make sure that it is placed on the agenda, I will so move that this issue be placed on the Judicial and Legislative Committee's agenda.
Okay. A motion by Supervisor Rosario to place this on the agenda. Supervisor Zurflue, you second?
Yes, sir.
I have a second by Supervisor Zurflue. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All right. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Awaiting. Opposed? All right, that motion carries. So Supervisor Clendenning, if you would get that on your agenda, it would be greatly appreciated. And again, at those committee meetings, under public comment, you're allowed to make additional statements, as allowed by the committee chair. Thanks. All right. Acknowledgements and recognitions. We have none to date. We will have a special order of business. I'll probably do that at the conclusion of the packet here. By Jeanette Arms, the A D R C and Report, the director up there. So with that being said, we'll move into the packet. Page six of your packet is the referrals for October, and there were none. Going to page seven of your packet, the Operations Committee of Tuesday, September 15th. Pages eight, nine, and 10, Operations Committee of September 17th. Operations Committee again, on pages 11 and 12, there are October 6th meeting. We have monthly letter of comments from our clerk on 13. As long as I'm there, our clerk told me the other, at least in our county as of the other date, you had adequate poll workers in place.
Yeah, there was, Mr., if I may, Mr. Chairman, there was one municipality that reported to the Elections Commission that they were short, which was the town of Cameron. I have not talked to the clerk, and she has not communicated that with me, but even if she is, we do have a backup list of excess people that we can place there if she needs it. There's also a chance that the governor will activate the National Guard on that day, so we'll just kind of have to wait and see how that all plays out.
Thank you. All right. We have monthly letter of comments from the Human Resources Department, beginning on page 14, and running through page 19. We have the Cowson Detman Technical and Executive Summary, beginning on page 20, and going through page 33, page 20 through 33. On page 34, I have the Treasurer's Monthly Report. And that brings me to page 35, and the first resolution in our packet. I'd ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 20-10-1 to contract with Mary Ann Lippert Consultant LLC to coordinate a broadband workgroup resulting in submission of a funding application to the Wisconsin Public Service Commission for a broadband expansion grant. Fiscal note, cost not to exceed $6,200.
Okay. I have a motion by Wagner. I have a second by fire. I will open this up for discussion. I do have, Supervisor Wagner, I do have, I believe, maybe Mary Ann Lippert, who joined us, possibly virtually on this meeting. With permission, I'd explain what you wanted, if you have additional questions. Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of my colleagues know, during the shutdown and the period that we've had with the virus, nothing became more obvious to us than the inability of some of the rural communities to have broadband connection. And in all honesty, the question about broadband availability has been around for a long time. This is doing something about it. We don't know what it's going to come out with a reason eventually, but I certainly would hope that this would be something that would help our rural communities, rural residents, get access to broadband. And I will be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Supervisor Halliday?
I would agree with Supervisor Wagner. There's just tremendous need for the expansion of broadband in the county. If you go to the Pittsfield School Districts and you're a sixth through 12th grader, you're only going into in-person school for two days a week. And that means the other three days, you have to go to online classes for your education. And that means in the more rural parts of the county, you know, these kids are just being left behind. And the only solution to this problem is broadband expansion. And I think the $6,000 that we're going to invest in a consultant, you know, is well worth it. You know, we're looking at a $6 to $7 million. And I think the $6,000 that we're going to invest in a consultant, you know, is well worth it. You know, we're looking at a six to seven million dollar infrastructure investment that we're going to pay off if this, if this comes to fruition. So I'll be also in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Supervisor Clendenning.
Yes, this broadband has been on my mind for a long time. It's been to the judicial legislative committee. I have a newspaper here, the Daily Tribune, from August 5th, 2017, in which this was discussed. Two things about this is, it's come before judicial legislative committee and this committee did not pass anything on it, didn't think it was necessary. I think it's very necessary, but I don't understand why we have to hire somebody like Mary Ann Lippert, who was the governor's at our meetings, at the legislature in Mozzanee, when we went to those meetings, not once with broadband mentioned there because what did the governor at that time do? He did not support us. He did not give money. Right now, the governor, last week, gave out $800,000 for broadband study here to the whole chunk nation and for other people. It is fair. We have a hiring freeze on. I see no reason why the judicial legislative committee can't put this on their agenda and do the proper things when we talk to our legislator and try to get money for this. And for Mary Ann Lippert with the freeze on, I don't know why we're hiring her. So I'm voting against this and would like to bring it up at the judicial legislative committee where it belongs.
I guess I asked a question, I'm sitting here holding a gap, I got Supervisor here, if I can at least, would anybody like to at least explain the process to this point?
Yes, please.
Yes?
Yes.
All right. A number of months ago Supervisor Curry spent in this faction before I became the county board chairman and started down this road. And it's been an initiation of previous governor and this governor to support broadband expansion. It's been at the top of the radar for the Wisconsin Counties Association as we work through this. Even without putting a name to this, the fact that we have a consultant onboard who's worked on this project, knows the players, the people, and has been working on this for months with private industry to, I guess to reiterate what Supervisor Hatton said, to try to leverage in a neighborhood of $6 million of both private and public investment to provide rural broadband across the county is the reason that we are engaging in this contract. Take the name out of it with whoever the consultant is. It's somebody who has done the background work. They've been involved in this for months on end. They have coordinated many, many meetings along the way. This will come back to this board when all of this work is put together from a funding standpoint. The county's still going to have to come up with a match. And we've been working on some of the background on this before we could present anything to anybody, but this would be the first step. The second step would be the application of the PSC grant, which takes time to write and expertise to write. If that's approved, we then come back to this county board and say, how are we going to fund this? And one of the options we're looking at or this possibility is a loan to the, to the company and the private equity partners with a return on investment to us with full repayment of that loan over a period of about 10 to 12 years. So not only would we provide rural broadband, there would even be a small margin of income based on this. So we need somebody to coordinate. And that's, regardless of who it is, that's why we are at this point today. So I'll leave it at that and I will leave this up to further debate. That's the background on it. I won't weigh in on the issue. Supervisor Ashbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a trucking firm out by me with 200 trucks on the road and they don't know from day to day where the trucks are some days. So how long have we got to wait to sell, bring in some money into this? Can we get ahead of now and get some, help us with this money? How long are these people going to have to wait out there? Two, three more years or? How can we bring economic development in the north of our county if we have nothing to put these people to use?
I imagine the timing, I believe, was part of the question, Mr. Ashbeck. And that's part of the reason we're trying to move this along as rapidly as possible. We have deadline dates here prior to the end of the year to get these grant applications. And actually, really mid-November before we actually have to get this in and that roughly million dollars of public service money to start to pursue this. Further comment? So timing, Mr. Ashbeck, that's, that's part of the reason we need to move forward. Supervisor Lightman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm looking at the intent of synopsis of this resolution and basing on what you just said, the $6,200 is for the funding application. Would we be seeing a resolution in future months for working on a grant also? Or is this for both the funding application and application for the grant?
No, I think we make, the PSC grant would be done by consultants and the company itself, but where we would come into play is when we get to the actual funding that is. How are we going to do that? You know, that's what we're kind of looking for. A, does the county believe we need rural broadband? You know, do we need to have that countywide? That's a decision you have to make. I think I know the answer to that already, just listening to everybody. And then the next question is, how do we do it as expeditiously as possible? So to this point, the only expenditure you're looking at is up to consulting fee. This would come back by resolution at some point to the county if we wanted to move forward, but they don't even want to go into the planning stages until that public service grant would be approved. Now, I don't have the map in front of me. Supervisor Curry saw it yesterday. I think the rollout of this is about 17 additional towers constructed throughout the county to provide the service, but that was forwarded. Yes, I've seen previous maps of the two as we work with IT and our, and our angle with our radio dispatch, not radio, not dispatch, but our radio. Supervisor Lightman, go ahead, please.
Yeah, so if I could follow up, Mr. Chairman, then, then a grant would be written by staffer from this county and not Mary Ann Lippert consulting?
No, the grant would be written by actually probably Bud Tussel along with the advice and consultation of the consultant, but the grant application itself goes in from the ISP, from Bud Tussel.
So the whole process, then we could cap at $6,200, correct?
At this point, correct. Cap that, yes, to the maximum. Anything further has to come before this one. Supervisor Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You referred, it was a, we've been dealing with an ISP provider and that is nothing more than a company that is going to either build towers or put antennas on existing towers. Their engineers have looked at this. They're looking right now at putting at Highway D and Q in Nasonville, Cranmore, Hewitt, Bluebird Lane, and that's up just south of Aubredale, I believe. Highway in and Highway 13, Rudolph, Lonely Road, Pittsville, Arpen, Cary Rock, Dexterville, Millador, Northwest Wood County. And there's two out of the county, City Point West and Prairie and Meadow Valley State Wildlife Area and City Point East. Now those, those last three are out of the county. And that's not to say that every one of these towers is going to provide 100% service, but they've looked at, they've looked at right now about central and north central Wood County to provide the service with this grant. This wouldn't be the end of it for Wood County probably, but it's, I guess I'll speak in favor of this because this all has to be done by December 1st. Has to be presented. Now, it'll be voted on by the county. It's going to have to go through committee with a resolution. The resolution won't be to spend the money at this time. It would be to support this idea. If, in that resolution, you're going to have to have a definer that you can accept the money or turn it down. But you're going to, you're going to have to start looking at this and I'm going to go, do you want to, do you want to do this or don't you want to do it? There's no use of putting that for a grant and then later on turning it down. So that's, and I mean, this hasn't been done in secret, but it's been done by concerned citizens and staff and the county board chair. The availability of this grant has come up. That's, that's what we're looking at.
Yes, well, but school superintendents have been involved in this as we've looked at the virtual learning. We've looked at the business partners, Telmed, all of the other people that would use this. What we're trying to do, if I can answer Supervisor Clendenning's question, is someone getting live? Fond du Lac County, Kewanee County, Adams County, Lafayette, Green and Iowa County have all received grants and are working on this and have worked with these companies and they've all spoken very highly of this. So we're going to make sure we're in line, but other than this, to answer Supervisor Lightman, we are allocating no money. The next step is at our November meeting, I'd like to have a resolution that basically says, we're in favor of expansion of broadband. And then later, after that PSC grant was approved, then we get a kick out of how we're going to fund this. And at that point, how are we going to do it? So this is first step. So any further discussion on this resolution as it stands? Any further discussion? Supervisor Curry.
And there's more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's more that should, should come out and will come out to the board. But the interesting part of this is right now, I got to look at my numbers here, there's other counties that have done this, but right now you're, we're talking about for this grant, $364,000. 970 from the ISP provided, 970,000 in an amount of, not around that for the county, but it isn't direct money to the, to that ISP. It's a loan to the ISP. If this can be worked out and they'll pay it back, we'll get the money plus the interest that we pay on that loan. So it's, it's possibly an attractive venture on this.
Yeah, I'm trying to read that for a while. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further, any further discussion? There we go. I ask you to please vote. Supervisors Hamilton, Bry and Fisher. I have all three of those voted.
Fisher, yes.
All of those voted in the affirmative. And that motion carried unanimously. Thank you. That was the easy part. Now we go back to the second resolution in the packet, page 37, and this is the authorization sale of tax deed property.
This will be Resolution 20-10-2 to authorize the sale of tax deed property back to former owner. Fiscal note, the paid amount is $7,463.39.
And I have a motion by Balzine, a second by Fire. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? I ask you to please vote. And my people appearing virtually.
I heard a yes from my people.
Bry, yes. Fisher, yes.
And again, it appears that resolution passed unanimously. Thank you. Third resolution in the packet from the operations committee dealing with the comprehensive classification compensation plan for Wood County and ask the clerk to please read that resolution.
This will be Resolution 20-10-3 to adopt a comprehensive classification and compensation plan for Wood County, which will provide fair, competitive and equitable wages for full and part-time employees of Wood County not covered by union contracts, excluding any professional employees paid outside of the pay plan, as well as employees in positions with flat wages established by statute or county board. Fiscal note, none in 2020. If adopted, based on standard projections, the cost of implementation is approximately $700,000 in wages in 2021.
All right, now I have a motion on the floor by LaFontaine. I have a second by Zerflu, but I know this resolution is going to be amended, so I will at this point call out Supervisor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of you know from the, many of you were present at the operations committee, we were struggling with budget this year. And basically, one of the ways we found of looking at it, of balancing the budget, was to delay the implementation of this plan until July 1st. So I would offer an amendment to the plan to change the enacting clause to reflect a date, an implementation date of July 1st, 2021.
Okay, I have a motion to...
A motion by Wagner, seconded by?
Who was that?
Bry.
Bry? Aye.
Yes.
I have the amendment offered by Supervisor Wagner, the second by Supervisor Bry. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? All right, please vote. And you're voting on the amendment.
Hamilton, yes.
Bry, yes.
Fisher, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. And the amendment carries unanimously. That brings us back to the original resolution as amended, and I will open up discussion for the resolution as amended. Any discussion? Any discussion? I want to ask you to please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Bry, yes.
Fisher, yes.
And that resolution passed unanimously. Now that's over, I don't know if Supervisor Wagner wants a comment. I, I will, we, tremendous amount of work went into this budget and what we're looking at are structural changes and how do we put ourselves in a better position going forward? I was pretty calm about this the other day when I talked about it, but you know, I always try to take things down to what I guess I'd call the lowest common denominator, or what would you do at home? And I would bet that if any of you in this room looked back at what you either earned in income or what you spent the year 2000 or 2002, it's significantly less than what you spent this year or last year. And if you had to do that on the same exact income you had back in 2000 or 2002, it would be impossible. And our hands have been somewhat tied through legislation in where we can go. We just can't make, I always use the term widgets, but you know, there's, there's not more revenue we can come up with. And so we have to either programmatically change, we have to look at, you know, more programs, less programs, more efficient ways of doing business, but there, there is no more dollars on the revenue side. And this is one of the tools that we have in the tool belt and we're looking at that, we're looking at every opportunity. I'll just wrap this up and then go to Mr. Wagner. I cannot thank enough our finance director, our deputy finance director, our treasurer, the HR department, every department head out there. I mean, every single one of them came to the table and said, I can do something. It might have been $1,000, but they made a tremendous commitment. So with that being said, that's a lead in, Mr. Wagner.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the most important things I have to do today is inform the county board that when we put out the parameters for the budget, almost every department met those in spades. The cooperation from the department heads in preparing the budget, their budget request was absolutely remarkable and I thank them. I thank the department heads very much for it. One of the hardest things I had to do as chairman of the committee and with the provision of the chairman is ask them to make even more sacrifices. And as we work through this budget, and this is doing, quite frankly, in all my years of service, I've never had quite a more difficult budget than this, although the city of Marshall presented me with one last night, so I'm real happy about that. But the, the point is that we, as we discuss this, we understood that we've been thinking about this in, in the wrong way in many ways. And we have to look at, we have to look at maybe new ways of doing business and we have to find a way of dealing with a structural problem. We have identified that this year, 2020, 2021, will be a study all year long essentially of how we can fix the structure so that Wood County and its residents can get the services that it needs, the services that it demands, and at the same time, we are, we can afford to do that. It's going to be a very difficult process and we're just beginning. And we'll be bringing things back to you from time to time and to letting you know what we're finding and as well as asking you to make some very difficult decisions or what we think are going to be some difficult decisions. But anyway, I admire gratitude to the department heads and especially to those guys in finance. They put in some long days on this, on themselves, and I can appreciate what they, I really appreciate what they did. Again, I look forward to working with you with this next year and we hopefully, we can find innovative, new ways of thinking about the budget and our budgeting process. can find innovative, new ways of thinking about the budget and our budgeting process to make it all work out so it's sustainable and profitable for the citizens of Wood County. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Clendening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I found this to be a good learning year on the budget, that things happen at this meeting that haven't happened in other meetings. And I'd just like to be kept up to date on the fact, for all of supervisors, is the fact that the things were implemented now, such as a wage freeze and different things, hiring people, elimination of that. I would like to know just exactly, before we go through the budget, how much money we did save? And if individual supervisors have ideas, would they be accepted by the Operations Committee and taken into consideration, or something like that? I say, to being on the county board, is I have been, I was surprised to hear that we were in the hole at least $4 million, and I wondered about how that happened when everything went so good at the committee meetings, and everything went so good at the Operations Committee, when they called the committee chairs in, and then this hit us. Is it 6.2, or is it four, four million? What is our deficit right now?
Well, there is no deficit, I guess, if you want to put it that way.
It's not true.
We have a, there's a, unlike the federal government, we can't print money. We can't run out of deficit. We can use money that has typically been, you know, undesignated general fund kind of money to balance budgets going forward. And the question is, where did we start? And what was that base? And how much of that do we have to use? And then what do we keep in reserves, which have typically been in the neighborhood of $15 million? That's a general bar. And how do we get there? You know, as we look back at this, we're in a county that has actually lost population over the last 20 years. And then when you say, well, how do you spend more money? And I think it's been wisely spent. I'll give you an example. We have security in the courthouse right now, and I don't think there's anybody that would deny that that's probably good. And that costs the neighborhood $400,000. And you have additional staff in district attorney's offices and other places. They have to deal with, you know, rising crime rates and incarcerations, and you know, those all have to be funded. So you know, all of a sudden, you've increased costs, expenditures by a million dollars, when our net new construction has been pretty close to zero over those years. So that brings to, you know, I guess, brings it to a head, kind of the point that Supervisor Wagner made, is we're constantly looking at innovative ways to do it. And that's why what you just said, Supervisor Clendening, is so important, that not only do supervisors, but members of the community bring forth ideas, better ways to look at it. Typically, when we start, we'll talk at the state level, we have a big whiteboard up, probably this big, and we start throwing ideas out, and it starts with, on the left side, what would we never do? And way over on the right side, what must we do? And it's amazing how often the what would we never do makes it all the way over to the what we have to do side. So yeah, we'll look at everything, every option. And where you started with the deficit, and where you ended up, what I think is what the number you're looking at right now. You know, so structurally, I would, I'm venturing a guess, and you're going to have this over the next month, but I didn't need to throw a number out there, but $2 million? Is that a fair number, Ed? Am I ballparking it?
Roughly, yes. Roughly.
I know those are big numbers, you go out, but that's, so much is predicated upon what gets spent by the end of the year. I know what our revenues are going to be. Those are pretty much set in stone. And then what are those expenses? And our department heads, as Supervisor Wagner said, have been unbelievably sympathetic to the needs and cooperative in holding back, not spending. We've tried to maximize CHERS Act money, Road to Recovery money, every government grant out there to offset some of those expenses. So basically, every dollar between when this started and the end of the year that we don't spend, offsets some of what would have become deficit. Now, you got to remember, budgets are fluid, they're fluid document. That's a goal. So you can budget way up here, but if all you spend is, you know, a lower number, then you're in better shape than when you started. So we're trying to end up with more accurate budgeting going forward, so we don't have that guess at the end of the year, and end up exactly where Mr. Clendening is talking. So I'll open that up if anybody has any additional questions or comments. Supervisor Roser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, one thing that I think about when we talk about this is input from the public. You know, we sit here representing X number of thousands of people, and when you talk about innovation and sustainability and providing services in a cost-effective, efficient way, I'd like to see more public input in that. You know, what services are going to go on the one side of the board that people absolutely demand and are not going to do without? I don't hear from the public a lot. You know, if there's a hot button item, my phone will light up a little bit, but I, is there any way that we could, you know, because over this year, we have talked about making structural changes and deciding how we're going to deliver services in a more cost-effective way and increase efficiency. Do you think that it might behoove us to have like a couple of public hearings where we hear from the public on, you know, what is your perception of the services that Wood County gives? How would you like to see them done? Do you have any ideas on how we can be more efficient? What structural changes would you accept or be willing to pay for? I'm just wondering, would that be wise for us to reach out in a formal way to the public to get their input?
It's something I mention every time you're radio or public access TV appearance. Supervisor Wagner?
Well, I think the process, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the process itself speaks to the need for that. If we're looking at changing the way, if it comes up that we need to change the way that we're doing business in one department or another, I'm certain that we would ask those committee chairmen to, they would be consulted, and the result would eventually be a public hearing on that service. I mean, that's what it would have to be. I mean, I think, I think public hearings are going to evolve naturally from the process.
And I think, you know, these are big discussions, and kind of stuff sometimes we have in retreat type settings, but for the general public out there, about four-fifths, five-sixths of what we spend is already designated to where it goes. The discretionary spending is minimal compared to the entire overall budget. So those are discussions we have, and those are mandated services for the most part. State says you need to provide this, or the federal government says you need to provide this, they provide the funding, and it's passed to us, or they provide most of the funding, or some of the funding. And that's where the real discussion comes, is what do we, what do we add to it? Is there an extra benefit if we spend a little more, or what's the, to whose detriment if we spend less in those particular areas? So I hope those happen in every committee as we go forward, and then that works its way up, works its up to the board, and these are the decisions we make. That's a great segue into our, you know, our next meeting is the budget meeting. We have a public hearing prior to establishment of the budget. That happens on November 10th. Mark your calendars, anybody out there in the public. The public hearing will occur right before the board meeting, and the board meeting immediately following. The public hearing scheduled probably 8:30 or 9:00, I don't know when we vet the answer yet. Yeah, we, Mr. Clerk? Okay. Trent says no.
I'm looking at the chair of the committee, and he's looking at you.
He's looking at you too. Supervisor Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't rise to provide a solution to this problem, but I've been on the board, this is my fifth term. This isn't the first time we've talked about income and expenses, but this is the first time that I've heard the budget talked like a balance sheet. We're getting so much income, we've got so many expenses. I don't have the education or the expertise. I have to take the finance department's word or expertise. We're spending more money than we're taking in. But think about this as individuals. How many years you've been on the board? How many times have you approved an expense, but you didn't know how you were going to pay for it? Now, I'm not proposing that the finance director sits here, or the operations committee decides this, and I don't know if it's a solution, but we've approved positions or expenses, but we never, we just assume the money is there. Now, we know there's money, there's extra money for emergencies, but how many hiring positions have we done, or how many positions have we hired on a grant, and never figured in the year or two or three, when that grant is not going to be available, how we're going to pay for that position? Because I know what we're going to hear. We're going to hear, well, this person's doing a wonderful job, it's positive for the county. But it's easy to slip into what we're doing. I'm just as, I can give you examples from seed. We brought expenses to this more about water. We tested wells, but we never brought up how we were going to pay for it. We just said, here's this project, it has to be done to solve for the citizens. But we didn't understand, we didn't say, this is how, this is how we're going to pay. Now, I'm not saying you've got to cut every time, but we've got to, we've not only got to learn how to spend, we've got to learn how we're going to get revenue to do it.
Couldn't have said it better. And that's exactly the conversation we had the other day at the operations committee, we've had it before, and one of those is grant funded positions. Do they remain when that's over? Do we need to reevaluate? Need to go back and look at every one of those? And is that position more important going forward than some other one? You're right. Income is limited, expenses tend to increase, and we need to be able to do that. I want to assure the public, unlike the federal government, this is not deficit spending. We are in the black. We want to be safe in the black, and that's the discussion we're having today, is how do we have adequate reserves going forward to be able to facilitate any emergent situation that ever arises in the county? Supervisor Roser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think initially, we do come up with how we're going to pay for it. You know, I think initially, we say, this is the funding source for this new position, but that brings in the sustainability issue, long-term. Well, how are we going to pay for that? You know, for example, we've got a grant in human services right now. The first year, it's fully funded, the second year, it's less funded, the third year, it's less funded. And we had this discussion in the Health and Human Services Committee. How are we going to justify whether we continue that money over time? So I think even though we talk initially about how we're going to pay for that, over time, I think we get on that slippery slope where we continue a position, the grant funding goes down percentage-wise over time, and then all of a sudden, we have a position that we're paying for 100% at the county. And I think that's how we get into some of this problem, is that we don't think long-term about how that position is going to be funded. So I absolutely agree with Supervisor Curry. We've got to stop that slippery slope of continuing with positions that we end up funding at the county level. I'd like to also say something about your mandates from the federal and state government. Those things initially may be funded, but over time, the mandate stays without the funding following it. To me, that's unconscionable, because if a mandate is given to somebody and the funding is not there, we need to rethink about those mandates. And that's always bothered me over the years that I've been on the county board, is why does the funding not continue when the mandate stays in place, and then the onus remains on the local taxpayers?
Because the levels of government above us have to say they're holding the line, they continue to provide a service.
Right.
If only heard that, it's, oh, yes, I've been alive. So keep that in mind. All right. That may be that to that. But that's where we're going. Hopefully, that was a little bit of information for the board and for the public. And like I said, we do appreciate any input that we get.
I have one more thing to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I would like to see that public hearing start at 8:30 instead of 9 o'clock, because I think some of these things may be also further explained to the public during that public hearing, and I'm not sure we can do that in 30 minutes. I'd like for that to be more of an expanded discussion about how we came up with the budget, what kind of cuts were made, and I think that people need to be given credit for how much money they found. Like our little veterans services, you know, they cut 19% of their budget, and that's not a big budget, and it only, it was less than a thousand dollars, but the percentage of their budget was significant. And that needs to be told to the public, because the public needs to know that we are being conscientious, we're being thoughtful, we're being deliberative as we present this budget. So I'd like to see more of time for the public hearing than less.
Take the time under advisement. Remember, we won't start the county board meeting until that hearing is over.
Till it does what?
We won't start the county board meeting until that hearing is over.
Oh, okay.
We'll take the time under advisement.
Yeah.
All right, everybody good with us moving forward? All right, I'm going to jump to page 47, which was after the draft pay plan. That's the Health and Human Services Committee meeting of August 27. Health and Human Services, September 1st, on 49. Page 50 and 51, their meeting from September 24th. Supervisor Clendening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things I noticed, you got locked in the wrong channel, but channel I'm on, I think your health department is doing good with the COVID pandemic and things like that. But why, who makes the decision whether Wood County reports a number of deaths or the number of new cases? I noticed the last two days, it hasn't been reported. Who makes that decision?
Supervisor Ballenstein?
So I think I can answer this. So first of all, there was a big outage for the Department of Health Services over the weekend, and so there weren't updates on the website. They've since caught up on that. The Wood County Health Department has also said that they're not going to report specifics on the new deaths that have occurred since the first five have happened. Now we're up to 10 or nine, I think. But they do update it on their dashboard. They typically don't update on the weekend, though. And also on Mondays, they don't show the increase over the weekend, because they don't take account of those three days. They only do it Tuesday through Friday.
Thank you.
And then that information is passed to the state, to the HHS. So I don't span it, and we try to update, it's on our dashboard on the Wood County website. There's a lot of that. Supervisor Clendening, want more exact information, we can certainly get that party, but generally, it's updated minimally every couple of weeks. All right, Health and Human Services Committee meeting, September 24th, I said 50 and 51. The report from the Health Department, beginning on page 52, with Director Conframans, and running through page 56. And again, I cannot compliment them or thank them enough for the number of hours they're putting in, and the work they've been doing to fulfill all the reports, and everything that needs to be done during this process. The Wood County Human Services Department monthly report, beginning with Director Ruhling, is on page 57, and that runs through page 63. Any questions on those? Page 64, the CBSO's report, Special Service 64 and 65. The units of the Wood County Public Safety Committee of September 14th, beginning on page 66. It goes through page 71. Public Safety Committee of October 12th, beginning on 72, and running through page The Civil Service Commission meeting, September 8th, on page 76. And then information on the Second Amendment counties, that was pages 77 through 86. 77 through 86, informational. Page 87 through 101, it's a lot of stuff here. This is the humane officers' reports, beginning on July 26th, and running through October 3rd. That's pages 87 all the way through to 101. Beginning on page 102, and running through page 150, and I'll go through these a little bit, our various sheriff's department reports, but page 102 to 114 was the press release, the recent arrest they had in a 1980's murder. Their monthly reports, beginning on 115, you've got August, September, October. We run through all the jail population reports. Anything sheriff department related through page 150. Does anybody have any questions there? I'll let you go through those. I'll hesitate for a minute here. There's a lot of pages there, and it's, like I said, August reports, September reports, Crime Stopper reports, K-Neg reports, Dantrell Resources Patrol reports, operations over 10 in jail. Any questions there? Pages 151 through 155, with some information on possibility of jail, construction there, that's 151 through 155, as that evolves. Beginning on page 156, and running through page 150. Beginning on page 156 and running through page 164 was a grant application for the Legacy Foundation. Any questions there? That's just informational?
Just went down again.
Do you want me to hang on, Trent?
Yeah, stretch this out a little bit.
How about a little break? All right, did they give you five minutes, Trent?
I don't know.
All right, we'll get, we'll take a five-minute recess while they work on this real quick on the chat aspect. Thank you. Okay, I think we're back. I am since excused Supervisor Hamilton. He was participating from work, and he has a situation where he has to go back to that. So he is excused. We'll move forward then. We just had the Legacy Foundation, their grant application, and then on page 165 of your packet from Public Safety is the resolution.
This will be Resolution 20-10-4, to accept Legacy Foundation grant funding and create a mental health liaison officer position. Fiscal note, years one and two, which are 2021 and 2022, wages and benefits are based on investigator sergeant rates outlined in the Deputy Sheriff's 2020 to 2022 Collective Barney Agreement and are fully funded by a Legacy Foundation grant. Subsequent years' wages and benefits will be funded through the annual budget process.
You have a motion by Ashbeck, I have a second by Zerflu, discussion. Okay, well, I'll start with Supervisor Beyonce, then, then I'll come up to Supervisor Roser.
Thank you. I just have a question. Do Wood County employees of the Sheriff's Department have access to an EAP program that could take some of this burden off, especially after our discussion about grant-funded positions?
They, they do, but this is more in regard to jail population. But yes, they are employees.
Okay.
Supervisor Roser.
Okay, so this is a perfect example of just what we just talked about. And so I had a conversation with Sheriff Becker during our five-minute break, and he acknowledged that this is a perfect example of that slippery slope where we have a funding. And so these are the kind of positions that we need to continue to be diligent about, about collecting documentation for their effectiveness when we have, when we create these positions, and then really critically look at it. You know, it says right here, you know, for the two years, it will be fully funded through the grant, and then subsequent years' wages and benefits will be funded through the annual budget process, if the position is shown to be effective, if it's a good ROI, if, if, you know, all of those things. So I'm just pointing out that this is our slippery slope with grant-funded positions, and we've got lots of these in the county. So that's part of looking at the way we do business, at looking at all of those issues that we've talked about with the budget, and we've got to be diligent, as county board supervisors, in critically assessing those positions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, I ask you to please vote then. And I have the people online, Supervisor Fisher and Supervisor Bry.
Yes.
And that resolution passed with three no votes, so the resolution passed. Page 167 in your packet, Minutes of the C meeting from September 14th, and that's on 167, 68, and 69. Minutes of the C committee from October 7th, beginning on 170, going through page 174. Various minutes from the Golden Sands Resource Conservation Development Council, beginning on page 175 through 186. Any questions there? 175 through 186. Looking back at the people who vote, no. All right, North Central IFED Board minutes from Thursday, July 30th, on 187 through 189. Questions there? UW Extension Monthly Report, beginning on 190, and that runs through 194. Monthly Update from Land and Water Conservation, beginning on 195 through page 200. Monthly Update for Planning and Zoning, beginning on 201, group 206. Citizens Round Water Group Meeting, September 21st, on 207 and 208. Various minutes from the Economic Recovery Meetings, the PPE Meetings, beginning on 209 through 215. 209 through 215, we continually try to make sure we have adequate supplies in the county at all the facilities necessary. And as you've seen, just another comment, I guess, you know, we've seen a, I don't know, a fast increasing number of cases in our area, so we want to make sure that we have the equipment necessary to deal with that in our healthcare facilities. 209 through 215. Begin on page 216, a report from Alexander Field. I thought there was some kind of interesting information in there as we move forward, as well as, well, that was 216 and 217, 218 was the airport, and then we had on 219, a memoranda from Marshfield. That was 219 and 220. Anybody have any questions there? Any comments from Marshfield? No. All right, 221, Minutes of the JNL Committee from September 15th. Their second meeting on September 15th, on 222. Their minutes from October 2nd, beginning on 223, and they run through 227, 223 to 227. The Criminal Justice Courteier Ad-Hoc Committee Meeting Minutes of September 9th, beginning on page 228. There's various meetings there. They had their September 15th meeting, September 23rd, September 30th, and those run through 231. Any questions on those? Page 232, the monthly report from the Child Support Agency. Again, another agency that's continually garnering awards from the state for the great work that they do in that one, in collections. The monthly letter from our Court Counsel on page 233. Get to page 234, is Minutes of the HIRP Committee, their October 1st meeting, on 234, group 237. I have the report from the Highway Commissioner, beginning on 238, and running through 241, Roland Hawke and his group. We have the report from our Parks Director, Chad Schooley, and his department, beginning on 242, that runs through 249. Questions there? The briefing page 250, and another resolution.
This will be Resolution 20-10-5, to authorize the county clerk to execute a quitclaim deed transferring county property from Certified Survey Map 10783 to Peter P. Wintestorfer. Fiscal note, the county will receive $7,500 for the sale of that parcel.
Thank you. And I have a motion by Supervisor Clendetti, a second by Supervisor Zerflu. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? C9, please vote. My virtual people, Supervisor Fisher and Bry.
Bry, yes.
Fisher, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. That resolution passed unanimously. Thank you. Page 252 in your packet moving on, is the Property Information Technology Committee, minutes from October 5th, and that's 252, 3, and 4. We have the monthly letter of comments for the IT Department, beginning on 255 and running through 259. Letter of comments from Maintenance Rubens, comments on 260. We have a letter here, just basically an engineering update, on page 261, 2, and 3, for the City of Wisconsin Rapids, seeing what they're doing. The Aging Disability Resource Center, Central Wisconsin, their minutes, 264 to 267. Central Wisconsin State Fair, minutes, 268, 269. Macmillan Memorial Library, 270 and 271. Sound Central Library System, beginning at 272, and that runs through 274. And I'm going to hold the last page in there, we're done with our special order of business. So at this time, do I have Jeanette available? She's virtually appearing. I can't see the screen right. I saw she's somewhere. So Jeanette is the Executive Director of the Aging Disability Resource Center. She's appearing with us today in regards to the annual report. And Jeanette, I will turn this over to you if you are ready to go.
Here we are. All right, so again, good morning, everyone. I just want to first start with acknowledgement of, thank you very much for allowing me to have time on your agenda today to talk about our 2019 annual report. And also, I always want to thank Trent, because Trent, the county clerk, he keeps me in order and he keeps me connected, and he's very happy. So thank you very much, Trent. Also, to our, the supervisors who actually represent the A D R C on the Wood County Board. So we have Mike Frye, Supervisor Bill Clendetti, and also, as a citizen member now of Mahan. And also, I just want to say thank you to Supervisor Roser, because she called me up a while back, and she said, we want to hear from you. And we got it to where we coordinated it so that I could present before the full board and not just the Human Services Committee. So we're pleased to be here, and I have with me Jennifer Cummings, who is our Agent and Wellness Director, and also Kit Rouge, who is our Quality Manager. And they oversee our locations in Wood County. So our regional office in Wisconsin Rapids and our regional office in Marshfield. So they will be jumping in on this presentation to clear out and answer any questions that you may have. So here we go. I know that many of you are familiar with the A D R C, but always want to make sure people know what our mission is and understand that we are a trauma-informed care organization. And the principles that we focus on is trust, welcome, collaborative, respectful, empowering, and we make sure that we provide those types of service programs and opportunities. So anyone that comes into our organization or calls our organization for any, we want to feel that we provide service to you with those elements or those principles showing up. They should be very prevalent when you or anyone, as you know, pitches out to us. And our butterfly, the little purple butterfly, that's representative of us being a trauma-informed care organization. And we carry out our trauma-informed care, external of the organization, but also internal of the organization. So it's how we treat one another, and it's not about what's wrong with you, it's about what happened to you, and how can we provide services internally or externally for the organization to support you the best way that we can. So we do our work by promoting choice and independence through education, advocacy, and access to services that prevent delay and lessen the impact of aging and disability in the lives of adults. We most definitely, as much as possible, we want to keep older people and people with disabilities, adults with disabilities, in their homes, in the communities where they live for as long as they like. And that is what our services truly are about, making sure people can thrive within their Now, we had some wonderful accomplishments for 2019, and I expect to go through these quickly, because I want to also talk about how we are visible in Wood County. Our accomplishments in 2019 focused on partnering with North Central Health Kit, excuse me, North Central Technical College, to have computer labs, which assist people with something new or modifying in their Medicare Advantage program. And we wanted to share this across the region. So the work we did with North Central Technical College was a pilot. It was successful, and we want to find other opportunities to do it throughout the region and of course, Wood County, so that people, we can help people to use the technology to modify their Medicare plans during open enrollment, because that's a very busy season for us. And helping educate people takes a little of the weight off of us, but it also empowers them to take some responsibility and learn how to do those things themselves. So those are wonderful opportunities that we continue to look for. Established community office hours at the Athens Public Library, The Landing, and that's Woodson, the Y W C A in Marathon Counties, that's their new senior center. We had two where we took work into the community. So our research specialists and our benefits specialists actually set up specific times that they would be at those locations, and people could come to them during their time, spend the time in the library or the senior center, and ask questions, or actually set up appointments to get whatever they get care of. And this is a way where people who may not, who may live further away from our office, our regional office, they have that opportunity to visit a place that's closer to where they live. And again, that, both, that, those community hours at Athens, the Woodson Y M C A, those were programs. So we want to do that more and spread it out in the community. I'll talk about that a little bit more closer to the end of the presentation. We secured funding to purchase brand-new males-on-wheels vehicles. We purchased two new vehicles, and we did it totally through private grant funding. So patients at the cost of about $70,000 funded those vehicles. We collaborated with the Regional Trauma Advisory Council to develop a referral form. So we're trying to standardize the referral process and work with fire departments, emergency technicians while they're in the field, so that when they see things, they can fill out the form and actually get it back to us, and we can support those clients, because those are first responders, people who go into the, and those ways, they see things, and we want them to know how to refer, get people to us as quickly as possible. We trained 400 people in dementia-friendly, dementia friends, community, and business presentations. We started a diversity and inclusivity initiative, and we're hoping that we can improve on services to underserved and minority patients. I and I was initially interviewing for this position and hiring. One of the things that stood out is how we bring in more of our hidden populations across the region. So that's our Native Americans, our Hmong, Hispanic, our American population, smaller, much smaller minority populations, but where are, how do we get to them and put things that we need to ensure that they know about our services and we're providing the support that they need. So I'm working on a diversity initiative, and we started that last year, and we did several diversity events, learning about... And we did several diversity events, learning about native or minority populations and in addition to providing information and resources at different events. We also have a caregiver newsletter through our Caregiver Support Program. And it's sent to nearly 200 family caregivers across the region. And I'm not sure, I don't think it goes out to our board members, but our A D R C board members. But if board members are interested in it, we'd be more than willing to make sure that it's sent electronically to board members so that they know what's going on. But this newsletter is sent specifically to caregivers who are part of our caregiver support network. We expanded our advocacy efforts through training. We went to Madison several times last year. We had, this was the latter, we talked about Alzheimer's. We talked about disability services. We talked about aging needs. So we went, I believe, three times last year. And we actually advocated for the need of individuals for our region. And we got to meet with our state legislators. And we've been keeping in touch with them. So advocacy is a big part of what we do. And it's mandated by the state that we do advocacy. And we're talking about grassroots advocacy lobbying. We're just talking about the issues and asking our leaders to be educated and to support us in supporting the populations we serve. Another initiative that we, in 2019, is we partnered with Payton's Promise. And Payton's Promise is an organization that started by a young, I think Payton is a young lady, a little girl, very interested in feeding people, making sure that food insecurity didn't exist within the population. So they do a lot of volunteer work around that effort. We partnered Payton's Promise and the Girl Scouts to develop Senior Snow Days. In 2019, the winter of 2018, 2019, I think 13 snow days straight where we were closed and we were not delivering meals. And that really bothered me. It bothered us as a staff. You know, what are people doing during those times? It's dangerous for us to drive and deliver meal. Dangerous to have people come out to everything, but you know, are there, what are the most needed people doing? And are they going with the food? So we decided to provide shelf-stable foods to help elderly. So on those hard winter days, they had, they give all those food and take advantage of that stored supply of food when we can't get out to them. And again, we would like to find other agencies throughout the region that would like to partner with us to do initiative like Senior Snow Meals. Because our older adults were very pleased. And I think we did 200 clients and we served 200, I'm sorry, 400 shelf-stable meals that utilized on the snow days. Alrighty, so when we get to our revenue, we bring in about $6.6 million. And those primarily through the state and we get funds for our A D R C side and our aging side. In addition to, you can see across the region, the tax levy that's provided by the four counties. And we don't separate the tax levy and other program income that we might receive. Take all of those, you know, all of the revenue that we receive and put it together. We don't separate it based on population size or how much we do over this county or that county. We put in one pot. We see ourselves as one A D R C and we provide service, services ever it's needed. So sure, Wood County, it doesn't matter how much tax levy you pay in, you are whatever's needed for the population that we're, or people who are calling us saying that they service it. Okay. Our total expenses almost equal our revenue. I think, so we pretty much had a balanced budget. We spent most of our money on nutrition services. That's where the greatest need is. And then also, almost $2 million, not quite, on our resource specialist, our resource center services. And you can see how we go down. Prevention services receive the less, the least. And administration across the region, we're spending about $1 million. Okay, so we did set contacts where people, us, call into the Aging Resource Center and talk to either resource specialists or benefit specialists. And we have those contacts either via phone, face-to-face meetings, office, or like we started last year, our, where we do community hours at a location. Or we go into customers' homes. And we also do any needed follow-up. So that you know, we have 17 resource specialists, nine benefit specialists who support customers throughout the region. As I mentioned, they field calls, they visit customers in their homes, and we're now providing those community hour locations. So this slide pretty much shows you where calls come in as far as types of services needed. So benefits or long-term care, like family care, I R S, what types of supports are in the community, help the person stay in the community in their homes. So that's a pretty large number. And you can see in Wood County, we had a little over 6,500 calls from customers in Wood County. And a total contact calls coming in were 22,500. And then the number of customers served were a little over 14,000. So I know everyone understands that it's 14,000 customers who may have had repeated contacts with us of that 22,000. So within the annual report, we broke down who was doing what and where. So you can see from our elder specialist contacts, Wood County had right under 700. Might as well say 699. Disability benefit specialist contacts, Wood County, 821. And our support area, we had, they're not separated by counties, but we had a total of 828 with 92 cases being managed. So those are ongoing cases that are caregiver support, but are continuing to grow. And 220 customers were served. Our community health educators who do our prevention work had a total of 140 participants, 200 classes, and 27 presentations throughout the region. So for our nutrition program, we have 12 community-based senior dining sites throughout the region. We have, of course, our Meals on Wheels and Cafe 60 program. Right now, Cafe 60 is just Marathon County. That is a, I think a, helped a pilot that actually started within our region. But we've only had Marathon County interest in the Cafe 60 model. And that's a model where we actually partner with local restaurants where people 60 or older can go and eat food that's set up on a menu where our dietitian has helped them to establish right consequences and so forth based on their established menu. But it's just an opportunity for people to stay within, go to restaurants that they enjoy going to, be able to with friend or family meet in those restaurants. And they can go anytime of the, whereas with our community dining sites, they're usually from 11 until 1 o'clock sometime between those hours that people go. But with Cafe's program, people can go pretty much during the hours that those restaurants are open. And our meals are available to people who are 60 years and older. And for Meals on Wheels, those are mobile, people who have, who are mobility limited, hung back, and unable to prepare a nutritious meal for themselves. There is no cost for these meals, but we ask, actually, the state requires us to ask for a contribution. And that's how we bring money back to the program. So for home delivered, we ask for a contribution of $4.50 per meal. For Cafe 60, it's $4.50. And for our community sites, it's $3.75, yeah, $3.75. And people can't give that much. We just, we just ask people to give what they can. And some people give more. The cost of a meal for us to prepare it and everything that it takes to get it delivered and so forth, it's over $9. So a little over $9. It's really a deal getting a meal for that cost. But no is required to pay anything. And specifically at our meal sites, we do have a setup where people can pay and it's confidential so people can't see who's paying what, when, and where. And then we mail out next statement to our home-delivered clients and they can send money if they can. And if they can't, we understand. All right, so for Meals on Wheels, as you can see, total numbers of meals served in 2019 were 107,000 and to a little over 1,000 customers. And in Wood County, we did 30,296. A 60 meal, we did 1,400 and 14,000. And for our dining sites, we did a total number of meals of 39,500. Customers served over 1,000. And in Wood County, 20, oh, 20,400. So if you saw that, I think Wood County, I'm going back to that because Wood County, oops. Wood, truly, had the highest number of meals served through our dining sites. Very interesting and positive because the needs older adults are getting out and they are taking advantage of that service. So to finalize just this portion of the presentation, we have many people who donate to the A D R C. And as I mentioned, the generous donors who gave so that we could buy our new Meals on Wheels vans. So I have them listed. But in Wood County, you can see that there were 93 volunteers who participated in some way throughout our programs and services. And we had a total number of 328 volunteers region-wide. So as I mentioned, we are a pill organization. So we, in one organization out of 25, we put into one pot, use it as needed. And I did say that the majority of our funding comes from federal and state grants, the older American Federal Act. And also, we receive donations from foundations and individuals. And I'm trying to do more with getting community involved, with providing donations and get some responsibility for A D R C as a program who supports the entire community. We have 6.5 million annually. And we have that covers the bulk of me as an executive director. We have one executive director, one agingness director, resourcing director. We have a quality manager who is helping to manage, who is helping to measure our performance across the region. And we have one fiscal director, a nutritionist or dietitian who makes sure that our meals are what they should be based on federal and state guidelines. And we also have a, one administrative coordinator or manager who actually oversees clinical staff. And those clinical staff, even though they are set up in regional offices, we're standardizing the processes so that when we have absence or someone is out for a while, the person can cover no matter what location they need to go to. So I think that's the benefit of everything being standardized and everyone knowing how those processes work across the region. So this is where we talk specifically about Wood County. And I'm going to particularly talk about 2020, 2019, and 2018 data. Now, within 2020, we had COVID this year. Everybody knows. And it really impacted our organization as to how we served customers. So you will see that our numbers go down in some areas and go up in some areas. So as we compare 2018, 2019, and 2020, you will see that our call volumes, even though we had COVID and our offices are not open for walk-ins, we will take office appointments for emergency situation. But people are still calling us. And I think that speaks to our advertising. We're doing it on Facebook. We're doing it on Facebook, we're doing it on the radio. We are letting people know that we are open to provide services, hopefully as much as we can without having contact. But, so you, you see just about a little over a thousand dollar difference, not thousand dollar, thousand, a thousand in numbers, in the call volumes that came into our organization. Meals on Wheels went up significantly. In 2014, we went up from 2013, but in 2020, we went up, and that is because our community dining sites, we are not doing community dining during COVID-19. And the state gave us permission that anyone who, even if they went to the community dining sites, if they feel that they need a meal, they can get a meal. So we have people who would.
So the units are broken down, those are hours of service given to those customers. So if there's a class, like we'll use this one, I'm going to use caregiver training on duplicated customers. In 2019, there's four, and there's twenty-one total training units. Then a total for those, the four, one session, where four people were attending, we counted four caregiver training units. So roughly, it's five classes. I know it's not the cleanest thing, but it's what we're able to use in our database. So that's similar for the prevention program units. So the one person that participated in 2020, they attended, had two hours of classes for the prevention program. Something I would note is because of COVID-19, our classes too, they, mid-March, this is really first order data, there was nothing to add in second quarter.
Okay, thank you, Kit. And the same goes for our caregiver training, unduplicated customer, thirteen in 2020. And that's because we actually learned to provide services in a different way. COVID actually pushed us to advance our technology. So we can do our caregiver training via the computer or phone. So the numbers went up for January through June, which is good. And then you can see caregiver training units also went up. So they had time in there. All righty, so for our benefits specialist area, of course, because of COVID, the number of contacts went down January through June. Unduplicated customers were about half, a little less than half of what we had in 2019. Disability benefits specialists, one sixty-three, and disability benefits specialist, unduplicated customers, thirty-six. So COVID hit us hard in our elder and disability benefits specialist area, but we are continuing to advertise and let people know that we are available for them. Caregivers support case management contacts, a hundred and seventy-seven, they have went up, and I really think that it has to do with COVID. People are within their homes, it's stressful, you know? They're needing resources, so they're reaching out. And, you know, how great is it that the ADRC is here for them to reach out to? So I'm glad to see those numbers going up, and I'm also glad to see stability in our unduplicated case management customers, even though it went down from 2018, but there's still, it still remains the same from 2019, which I think is good. Would you want to add anything about that, Jennifer?
Well, I, I just know that a lot of people have reached out, and our caregiver support coordinators have been very helpful in, in providing resources and offering an ongoing support for folks who can't get out or have questions about services and need to go.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to speak through this area. We just wanted to show you how we are in the community. We, these are the coalitions and councils that we actually sit on or participate in throughout Wood County. And you can see the list here and how often we're involved, so people know us, the words getting out about who we are, what we do, through our partnerships with these individuals. And again, it's a voice at the table, which I, I really believe in having a voice at the table, because who's going to think about older adults or adults with disabilities and funding or programs and what's needed for the community when the ADRC is not there to actually help advocate and coordinate and make sure that somehow we're integrated in people's work that's being done in the community? So that's what that's about. Ongoing relationships we have with Memory Cafe in Marshville, so we have our caregiver support coordinator that attends regularly, the same thing in Wisconsin Rapids. And then also Jennifer Clark and Penny Kirk, who are, who are our community health educators. They work closely with Security Health Plan to get evidence-based prevention programs in the community. So that's what I was talking about, where we partner more with organizations, clinics, hospitals, to do more of the prevention work. We're working with St. Luke's in Rapids, the YWMCA in Marshville, Companion Day Services, the Rotary Club. And many of you probably know that we opened a new senior dining location in Marshville within the senior center. And that's what we'd like to do more of across the region, opening dining sites or placing dining sites within existing senior centers where people already are there, we have the audience, there are other things going on, and they can also engage in a good nutritious meal over great conversation. And we spent almost sixty thousand dollars in creating that dining site. We put all the equipment in, the appliances paid for all the work to be done, and we have a site manager and volunteer staff that are there. In addition to, it's a Meals on Wheels pickup site, and hopefully we are looking at about twenty-five thousand dollars in annual operations for this year. Well, maybe not this year because of COVID, but annually, that should be the case. All right, we also trained two interns, we have ten professional leaders for our evidence-based prevention program, and two of our volunteers, and the rest are with different organizations, PCCs, entities. We have a hundred and twenty volunteers that work with the different programs. And even though we utilize a lot of volunteerism for our meal program and services within the ADRC, there's a lot of staff time that goes into the volunteer coordination. And I listed that with, you know, fiscal staff, nutrition site manager, clerical staff helping to coordinate, our leadership team, management staff. So there's a lot that goes into pulling volunteers together, keeping them up to date, and making sure that they have the resources to be successful in their volunteer roles. As I mentioned earlier about how we advertise, we stay on the radio in Wood County, and I know we're always invited to go back to any of the stations. They love hearing from us, and hopefully you hear us on the radio when we go, and we take turns. So different perspectives, different positions. We do senior farmers market in Wood County, and we have really strong collaborations with the Marshfield Clinic and Aspire's Health Systems. And we did two open houses, had never done an open house before, but we wanted just the community to see who we were, an opportunity to walk through and visit our programs, ask questions. And they were very successful. We had a really good turnout in both Marshville and Wisconsin Rapids. And I think from there, people learned and are passing the word on about who we are. So I just want you to know who actually supports Wood County through the ADRC. We have five resource specialists that work between both offices in Rapids and Marshville. We have one elder benefits specialist and one disability benefits specialist. So exciting staff across the region. And, oops. So we are providing a lot of service to Wood County, and I would like to entertain any questions that people have, if you want clarity about anything I talked about. And again, I, I do want to raise to the board's attention about APS. Last time I came forward to the board, we, you were looking at the resolution to amend the, our intergovernmental agreement to allow APS for Lincoln, Langley, and Maritain County. So as of September, we decided it was not going to work out for 2021. The ADRC is looking only to take on APS operations, and there, there are things that need to be worked out with the three counties before further consideration. But they asked us to keep talking, so I'm taking my lead from the counties and their court counsel as it relates to continued conversations. But just so that you know, it's not totally off the table, but it's off the table for 2021. And they told us pretty much that the amended, amended intergovernmental agreement can remain as it is because it doesn't take away anything or create anything. It just allows us the opportunity for it, it presents itself again. So again, thank you very much. Any questions?
Thanks, Jeanette. Does anybody have any questions? That's a pretty comprehensive report. They probably don't. I guess I have one in the back. Some guys are not here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeanette, this is Supervisor Hokamp. I want to thank you and your staff for putting on the presentation today, but could I ask you to forward the presentation to Trent so he can pass it on to us, please?
Already done.
All right. So the request was for the presentation, Jeanette, we already have that.
Okay, and I apologize, you guys got actual annual report hot off the press, so Angela Hansen dropped it off this morning, it should be on your back table, and we have some logo mats that she left for you also. So please take advantage of those.
Supervisor Plendening distributed those while you were speaking, so we have those in hand.
Oh, very good, thank you.
Yeah, so thank you for your time before we do. I don't see any other questions here, Jeanette, so we'll, we'll let you go and we'll finish up our meeting here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
All right, there you go. That leaves me one other item on our agenda, and that is recognition of a former county board chairman. Supervisor Rosar asked me if she could speak to the life and public service of Gordy Stargard. I was one of those lucky enough to have been able, to been here long enough to have served with him, so that would.
I, I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chairman. And the reason that I wanted to speak on this behalf is because I followed Mr. Stargard in his position. He called me and asked me to run, and, and I've been on the board now for all these years, having succeeded him. His wife was a nurse, which was an instant connection with the two of us, and over the years, not only was Gordy a neighbor, but he became a friend. Every two years, I would go to his house first to get signatures on my nominating papers, and it ended up being a thirty to forty-five minute visit, and he'd ask about, how are things going on the county board? And he'd always have his opinion about issues that were before the county board. And, and Gordy was really a wonderful example of a person with a public servant's heart who was willing to serve, and he was willing to serve where he was needed as the resolution that Trent put together on his behalf. So I just wanted to stand in recognition of his life and his years of service, of his friendship to people, of just honoring what he was to the community. He, and he ended up being a really good friend, he and his wife. I visited with him probably within two weeks of his death and was absolutely shocked when Trent sent us his obituary notice, but, but I'll tell you, he was a man with a broken heart. I sat at the table with him, his, his son was mowing his grass, and, and we visited for a while, and he was a very sad individual since Betty passed, and, and he truly did die of a broken heart, I truly believe he did. But as a friend of his, as a peer of his, I, I just wanted to stand and honor his life because he was a wonderful man, and he will be missed by me and by all those that had the privilege of working with him.
I'm going to let, go ahead Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I did make a motion for that, and I would like to, you know, give that honor to Donna Rosar, that it go on record that she made the motion for that because she's so close to the family. Thank you.
Okay, so let me, let me back up just a bit, and we will do that, that's a good point. Trent, would you like to read the resolution?
This will be Resolution 20-10-6 relating to the life and public service of Gordy Stargard.
And they have a motion by Supervisor Rosar, we have a second by Supervisor Fire. I guess the simplest way to do this, we'll vote for it, so I'm sure that will be announced. All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And I will note that that carried unanimously. And then I would ask that we stand in silence for one minute and honor Gordy Stargard's And I thank you. Yeah, just sum that up really quickly. Like I said, I had the opportunity to serve with Gordy, and I, you know, I'm not going to eulogize him, but I could do one sentence. I mean, he was a gentleman, and he was a class act.
Yes.
And that's just the way I'd put it, and he lived his life that way, and we are better people for having served with him and maybe try to emulate him every day. So if there's nothing else, Supervisor Lightman.
I know what time it is, I'll make this really quick. Yesterday morning, I had the fortune to listen to a WCA-sponsored webinar breakout session. We weren't able to be together in Wisconsin Dells in fall, and so this is the way the WCA is doing its breakout sessions. It was one hour long, Andy Phillips from the WCA moderated a four-panel discussion on livestock sighting, superbly done. If you have access to going back Superbly done. Um, if you have access to going back and listening to the yesterday morning session, uh, Bobby Wilson from Wisconsin Farmers Union made some incredibly intuitive comments that you should listen to. It's toward the end of the hour, but remember the name Bobby Wilson. And thank you, Lance, for making that possible for all of us.
I appreciate that, Bill. You know, we, we do a run car down there. Uh, those things don't happen by accident. A lot of practice goes in, not to the panel discussions, but into the presentation. And I'm glad you enjoyed that one.
They're all archived with.
They're all archived, yeah. And we'll continue to get those out. I still don't have any details yet on some of the upcoming events we're passing scrambling with. Not only what we're dealing with up here, but let's face it, Madison has more rules and regulations where else in the state. So we're dealing with all the things that happen down there as it regulates our offices and what we can do. So we'll continue down that road. Don't forget, next month's meeting, uh, yeah, is the second Tuesday, which is unusual. And we're going to precede the meeting with the annual budget hearing. So exact times and stuff will be coming up, the budget hearing prior to the county board meeting, second Tuesday, November tenth. Okay, anything else? Alright, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.